This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you.
No, the Michael said he was to help to go to the law. They went.
Mayor Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Tridio?
Here.
Commissioner Gandy?
Here.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Bolt?
Here.
What's he calling it, man?
He's, he's in the meeting.
I think he just muted. Let me go with him.
Okay. I don't know if he wants to mute or.
Well, he'll have to just to vote that he says he's here. You roll call.
Yeah, here and.
Here. Here.
So it looks like, yeah, he's in here. I just don't know.
Scott, can you hear us?
I could just catch him.
Yeah, they say you're here.
Yeah, say unmute until you're here.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
He's unmuted.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Are you there?
It looks like he's talking. It's just not coming through the TV.
Shake your head.
He can chat, man. He can put into the chat.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yay!
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner White? Is Commissioner White going to be?
She's not going to be here, as well.
Okay.
Well, in her, in her absence, I feel about ready to. Father God, we just thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. And Father, we just thank you for this time of year as we are starting a new year and we look forward to the spring. Again, life anew. Father, we just want to take this time as we prepare our hearts and our minds to start this year and to be able to absorb the needs and the wants of our community so that we can better serve them and we can hopefully make Lovington the best place that we can. We ask for your wisdom today as things come before us that we may use the discernment that you give us to make the right decisions. Father, we all always point to you and say, Father, it's all what goes to your will, God. And we just ask that you continue to bless us in all their events. Father, I thank you for the group that's here and I ask that you be with those that are not anyone traveling or whatever. Keep them safe and bring them back home. Father, I gotta be again, thank you for continuing to watch over this community. In Jesus Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
The legislative agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z symbol of perfect friendship among the united nations. Maybe Z. Great. No, I actually like the whole.
We can tell you's mad at that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion to approve the agenda that's submitted.
All right. A motion for second. I want this to jolly discussion. Shannon, oh, I forget. Commissioner Bolt. Yes, I guess he will. Yes.
Commissioner.
Carry on, discussion, go ahead.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Andrews, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of the vote in minutes of January. Eight, twenty, twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the adoption of minutes. Any discussion, any corrections, additions? Carry on, Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Capra, for. Ms. Shannon, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, the legislative bulletin, I put one of those at your station there. I got this from the league this morning. They had just some highlights of the legislative session. Says over three point eight billion in new money in the revenues from the state fund, general fund. And they'll be discussing crime and public safety, affordable housing, and oil and gas activity. Says their priorities will be increased funding for underfunded emergency medical services and directing more funding to improving the state's roads. Just saying, speak to me. Hopefully we can, we'll get some of that.
Can we like send a special request in on that for our main street?
I'm kind of getting confused, man. Stop, go, stop.
This lane only?
Yeah, yes.
Right turn over. Look, I'm not here to pitch it yet.
Oh, yes, he wanted it. I'm so sorry. Sorry, I.
I heard it in my ear.
You can leave it like it is. I didn't want all that. Crack for those. We did, we did. It's gotta give you a little hassle, you know? Because we take it a lot, I assure you. We'll be done. I didn't know, never doubt. I'm showing you, I kind of.
And the budget that was, Jack's record general fund revenue for fourth consecutive year, primarily as a result of continued record oil and gas productions. But I do expect that to go down because of the slowing growth reflected in the volatile nature of a state's energy-driven economy. They're citing the risk of sudden energy market price collapse as well as longer-term risks from slowing energy demand. Those are just some highlights from first page of the bulletin. I went ahead and copied all of that. Now, y'all might have already gotten it. I don't know what joke you're. So I just wanted to kind of bring that out.
Well, thank you for that. Anything, brother?
No, sir.
Oh, we appreciate that. Ms. Gasper?
Everything's going great. And I reauthorized a few of our, of our grants so that they can be extended so we can use some of them. We're already using quite a few for, quite a bit of our money for the veterans memorial. We've already obviously gotten some of our equipment. I've already requested a lot of the money back. So everything's going very smoothly. We're buying and requesting money back, so that's about all there is.
Spending the state's money.
We're spending it.
But as far as the money is coming back?
Yes, and the money is coming back. Yeah, we are seeing money coming back.
Good.
We've had deposits and such over the.
It's like two or three month turnaround time.
I mean, we're doing our big board.
That's all, Chris?
Yeah, thank you.
That's right.
That's what, that's what counts. You don't need your big board, they're not going to give you.
That's right.
Well, and I'm also, I'm also bugging, asking, hey, when can we have this back?
That's the way you really get the money, is the only way.
Well, we're very lucky that Christie and Dora get along very, very well, so.
We appreciate that.
That's about it.
Any questions? Thank you again. We really do appreciate you staying on top of that. Chief Clark, how are you this evening?
Good, good.
Good.
Mr. Beer? All I have is our activity for last week is we had two hundred forty-seven calls of service, two alarm calls, seven crashes, forty-nine traffic stops, three arrests, and code enforcement is after hammering the pavement, giving people citations and warnings for weeds and litter and still on the RV trailers trying to get all that squared away.
I know she collected over two thousand dollars from one RV park owner just last week, right?
Yeah. Well, that was.
They even, you know, you got sale on the RV park.
Actually, that's because the first part, because the first, the first part, he paid all his luggage taxes. They bought like four grand.
And he's come in to see me several times. He's trying to come up with codes. I appreciate her hard work.
Yes.
That's you doing some weed control. Surprisingly, here in January, we have weeds, but there's weeds out there, yeah.
Stuff that hadn't been taken care of through the summer.
How's the morale, chief?
It'll be good.
And, and like recruitment, how's that?
We, we got one did medical today. It's a certified officer. We got another certified application today. So these guys are coming from Hobbs. So we're trying to really do our due diligence and make sure they're quality candidates. And trying to get them working.
Senior citizens, we're pleased to have you guys on there Friday. And four-year officers, sure.
Yeah. I'm all in for it. Go Mary.
And Bro? Thanks to you, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Fire team?
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, as most of y'all know, we had taken receipt of our new fire engine. We have completed the in-service training for all the firefighters. We are, we have ordered and we're just waiting on equipment to come in so that we can get it outfitted and get it in-service. We'll have our pre ISO inspection tomorrow morning. So we'll see where we stand on that. Hopefully, we're looking good. I've done, I've put in a lot of hours on that. We have eight employees who will be starting fire academy on February twelfth. And this will be in-house academy. We will put that on, so hopefully we'll have by the end of March, we'll have eight new certified firefighters. And we have one intermediate student who just received his intermediate license. He passed his state test on, and national registry on that. So with the two basics and the intermediate out of the classes, we have three get licensed. And we still have two, three that haven't tested and two that have to read. But they are doing good, so. Other than that, that's all I have for this time.
Question?
I have to be easy, man. Sir. I think, only thing I had was with Robert and his crew, I appreciate you, saw you guys out there Sunday morning. And you know what I like about Robert, you guys with the profession, you get your gear on, probably with the cops. City, city employees had their gear on when they showed up. They had their uniforms on and they looked sharp. Police officers did too. Everybody looked sharp and clean and I think it represents us well. And I just want to say, appreciate that, like, so I was going down, love you guys all, getting out of trucks, all the effort, geared up with your reflectors, reflector jackets, looking sharp, pretty, pretty. It reflects on us and it has a good reflection, so I appreciate it. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Henry?
I just wanted to complain about the street on Main.
Okay.
For sixteen years, I've come to the city commission meeting the same way. And I think I mentioned I'm like a little overpass maybe for going over during this time, but you know. It was a buckshot, it was something.
Yeah, and that, that's right.
Progress is good. Sometimes the pain of progress is hard to. First March will be through with all of it. I'm just saying, this year, March, you know, you had big expectations.
There you go. No snow, no rain. I'm not coming back for going to continue. And, 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 Commissioner Bolt, I'm sorry, without your presence here, I kind of jumped over. Do you have anything you would like to address?
Yes, as I normally do. Buy, shop, and eat local. I'm also happy to see that Main and Avenue D is open. Looking forward to making progress there down Main. And I have a question for Chief Clark. I know at our last meeting, it was brought up about vehicles parking the wrong way on streets. And is that something that we're looking into taking care of and if we are doing anything on that?
Yes, I brought it up for the last supervisor's meeting. Also, I brought up semi trucks parking within the city limits in a zone that they don't need to be parked in. And also speeding down different thoroughfares in town with their loud mufflers. So there's a couple of different things we're trying to address along with everything else.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, taking care of stuff that people have brought to our attention, so I appreciate that. Other than that, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief, while we're on that, it just seems like we've kind of lost a little handle on the racing on the streets. I know, I'm sure Commissioner Gandy can, but that our, this lately, our street has just become a risk. And.
Can you join them?
Sure. Anyway, you know, I appreciate the enthusiasm and I know they, they want to make a statement or whatever, but it's gotten kind of.
Hundred percent.
And I know you know.
They're, they're coming off a poke in nine, going towards their south, just full throttle. Yeah, I'm trying to get them in the areas, but there's only three of them, so we're trying to do the best we can with what we got.
I wonder if we could invest in cameras, I mean, like a mobile camera?
Yeah, I've considered, we've considered speed bumps, we've considered stop signs to break up that, I mean.
I brought out the speed bumps, my first block of the street, it didn't go over two bumps.
You know, if you're driven the streets, like, we need more bumps?
No, it, you know, it's funny, I went down right beside Firehouse in Hobbs and cut through Fowler. And they've installed at least eight, and they're not just bumps, they're.
Humps.
Yeah, they even, everyone up there has a sign too, speed bump. And I thought, how? You know, I'm sure that's, everybody was cutting through and it is. Hopefully, we don't have to go to that extreme versus where we get the bicycle lane on Main Street, we may have to.
I like the bicycle lane on Main Street.
Yeah, full size.
How it ends all of a sudden. Goes nowhere very fast. Just like. Life for real, mate. And I question some of the engineers. I mean, we're, we're trying.
Ms. Cooper?
I don't have anything fun to add, so I don't know. My next department's been diligently working on getting these entered, sort of in, now it's up to November, December. Twenty-four seven on that right now, making progress and learning things and getting some procedures in place, so.
And it's not relying on the head. Learn fast, learn.
All right, any questions?
Yeah.
It's not your food?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, members of the public, I'm happy to announce that the city was approved for the full funding amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the CEBG, which is Community Development Block Grant for the ADA Sidewalk Project on Second Street from Central to Avenue D. There's a second round of funds available, so we will be going for more funding for that project. I'm also happy to announce that the city and LECO have completed the three hundred and ninety thousand dollar fiber optic high-speed internet project, which was funded through a very generous grant by the JF Maddox Foundation. This project brought or improved high-speed internet to over six hundred Lovington homes and over fifty businesses. The project took only six months, so thank you to LECO for a job well done. I can also report that the library sewer line project is complete and it passed state inspection today and the smell is gone. More good news, the GRT number for November came in at one million eighty-seven thousand dollars. This compares with eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars the month before, and it compares to eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for the same month the previous year. Our trailing twelve-month average GRT number is now at nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars per month. This number was the highest, second highest monthly GRT number going back to two thousand and ten. Finally, the city department heads and myself have been working very hard on our asset management program. We had our fifth workshop with Souter Miller last week, and I would like to show the commissioners the latest draft, which is only one result of this process. This draft is a level of service agreement which defines by each department our expected levels of service, our measurable objectives, and who is responsible for them. This is not the final version, but it is important to note that we have now started to define levels of expected performance by each department, which translates into measurable levels of service to the public. It also lists a mandated timetable when providing service to the public and/or addressing issues that arise. This defines to our employees the level of service that we as a city will expect from them. So again, this is not the final version, but if you look at page one, take for instance, the second one down Water Office. And expected performance would be all customer complaints shall have an initial investigation within two working days after the initial complaint. Objectives would be customer complaints shall be documented and investigated with two days of receipt during regular business days with a ninety-five percent goal. So we're trying to be realistic, sometimes things fall between the cracks, but we all felt this was a realistic goal. So we're trying to be realistic, some, sometimes things fall between the cracks, but we all felt this was a realistic goal, and these numbers can be tweaked. If you look at the fifth one down on page one, that's also water distribution. Customer service, response time for water breaks, water quality, outages, or sewer backups will be less than one hour. Um, work orders prepared will list the time of the call, person responding, and the time of response, goal is 90%. And again, this translates into almost all departments, if you go to page two, and you look at the second and third ones down, this even, um, mandates response times from fire, EMS, and police. Response time for police for in-city calls will be less than 15 minutes from the time to call to site. And obviously, that's not, your emergencies are going to be much quicker than that. And LCCA can report, contract that, and our goal is 90%. Um, animal services, which is the fifth one down, response time for non-emergency feral animals, dead cats, will be less than eight hours from call to site during normal business hours. Um, so this is kind of a work in progress, but it kind of shows you through our asset management program how we're starting to apply expected quality measures, performance measures, customer service measures to each department, defined into times and what results are going to be accomplished. And pretty much, you know, we got to do this 90% of the time, 95% of the time, and we're going to keep working on this. But this kind of gives you an idea of what we've been, what we've been working with the department heads. And that's all I have, but I'd be happy to send for any questions.
Questions? We appreciate the efforts. That's hard, because I know that we need a plan in place, and then only through response, people have to know that we've achieved and we really great ourselves.
And it holds people accountable. And, and going back to what you had said to me about a month ago, you know, we want to get into the Quality New Mexico program again. But we feel like this is a way that we can crawl before we walk, before we can run. So this is kind of getting us on that path to get back to that program.
That program's still alive, that's the problem. It's, it's having problems. Quality of, of New Mexico, uh, quality of New Mexico is having trouble maintaining itself, so hopefully, no right to share. But it, it doesn't matter if it's great, it's a great start.
Yeah, we have to all hold ourselves accountable. And we try to be very responsive to the public. Um, as an example, Robert, you know, we've been addressing some fire hydrant issues around town. Got one done at Polk Park, I think Friday, we did one on East Avenue H by the water yard today. We started on that anyway. Another one on Sixteenth and Tyler, um, tomorrow, so, you know, whether we see it on Facebook, or people contact me directly, or Robert, we're addressing these issues. Public is very pleased.
Ms. Vol.
So can you go aside? Um, I'm, I'll be bringing in the Lee County Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, next month for you guys to adopt. I'll be emailing that plan out to each of you individually, so you'll have plenty of time to review that hazard mitigation plan. Um, this is a plan, the sheet I handed you was just some of the, um, items. Oh, that's on the ADA, the sheet I handed you, sorry. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is, um, put in tact by the county, uh, for all hazards, all weather, severe storms, hail. I know, uh, Fire Chief has been talking to Lorenzo. Uh, when we adopt this plan, it helps us get state and FEMA funding for mitigation projects, for disaster relief, any kind of thing like that. Um, I know they're working, the grant writers working on getting a generator for the wastewater water departments, uh, through a FEMA grant, and so, uh, we need to be able to adopt this, so that's why I just want to kind of give you guys a warning, I'll be, because it is a huge document. So to review it, you guys are going to need that couple of weeks to review it, so I'll get that emailed out to you guys.
And what we're working on also with that is replacing the existing emergency sirens and getting more. Instead of three old ones, maybe have six new ones.
And be tied into the LCCA.
Right. So it can be activated from the LCCA in Hobbs. So thank you to Lorenzo for working with us.
Um, other than that, I'm finishing up, um, some of last year's TPFs, we'll be requesting the funding back on, uh, the melon overlay projects have gotten done, um, so hopefully to get that money back in a few months. And I'll also be bringing more grants next month to start out the new year, getting some more street projects going. Um, you did ask that, um, instructors come in, make kind of updates. Um, so NMD, NMD, MDN there with constructors is here, uh, to give us kind of an update on what's going on with our main street. I did have one question, this is Darren, I'm concerned with the, um, switching the detour on D, like, every day I go through it, it's in a different lane.
So that's going to change tomorrow, so that had to do with the diamond grooving, if the, excuse me, the new concrete paving, that's going to wrap up in the morning. So some of those devices are actually going to come off and it'll be opened up just a little bit better.
I've gotten a lot of calls about that, and people say, why is it changing all the time, and then I notice it was doing, and I said, well, there is still work being done.
But that diamond grooving will be wrapped up in the morning, so that'll, some of those devices will come off. Be a little clearer getting through there for the traffic public.
I don't know what that is, explain that to me a little bit.
The diamond grooving, so we did the, excuse me, the new concrete paving there, so for traction purposes, this, that, and the other, they come through and they actually groove it with saws.
That's what you meant, but I wasn't sure, unless you're putting in something else.
So it does help funnel the water away with the crosswalk of the, of the road, and it, it might be said is for traction. So, we appreciate your patience, obviously, we are progressing, huh? After tomorrow, that intersection should open up just a little bit more. Talking with our subcontractor, electrical subcontractor, hopefully by the middle of February, we can get the lights up and running. There's kind of a process to getting that started with aiming the cameras. I think your traffic engineer's got to come down and go through.
Yeah, it's not, it's not real simple, I mean, they, they have to make sure and all those get aimed at the crosswalks, find the proper distance and stopping distance for, for the traffic and for pedestrians. So, um, us, the state, we've actually been working for all that, once they get all that down and intersection is open, they'll get the cameras lined up, all the lights on again, it'll be functional. So, I mean, it's a, it's a slow process, you know, we have to make sure those, and the cameras are, are working properly and it's just safe. You know, you guys, we want to talk about the, the traffic, that's something that we deal with every day. And, you know, they, they pull out of a parking lot in Donald, whatever, and they gun it all the way down, you know, same, same on Love, same on First, you know. We can't do anything about that, you know, I don't tell, and my people, he doesn't tell me this again, wait, you know, we just.
All we do is post the speed limit, so.
Try to lower it, but they don't follow that, you know, yeah. You know, for whatever reason, I mean, I saw when we had a project on Avenue D, you know, there every day, you know, we had law enforcement, we had a, um, money, a funding for law enforcement to come out, unfortunately, we don't for this one, but we do appreciate, um, the help that you've been giving us, so.
Uh, so we've moved into the next phase, basically Avenue C up here to, uh, Central. Uh, anticipating probably two months on that phase. Uh, this, so we're in what we're calling Phase Four of hopefully six phases. So we're probably looking at, in the summer before it's wrapped up. Lot of, lot of variables, it's hard to schedule these projects with the unknowns, but right now, in a perfect world, hopefully, end of the summer-ish, we're wrapped up.
My guess is it just sounds like mid-July. That way, we have hopes up for our parade, right?
So right now, what we've done is, you know, trying to speed things up just a little bit, we're running a day shift down, I guess what I'd call a swing shift, with the underground, with the storm drain, work hours from 6:30 to about 10:00 right now. Once the underground's done, everything tends to fall into place as far as concrete operations and, you know, the paving. It's all about getting this underground done right now. So we're diligently working towards completion.
Go, go back to design on the medium and the middle, middle? We're not doing anything like that down Main Street, right? Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, I had some people talk about it, they said, oh, maybe that we go around, and I said, looks like they're, they're going to stick with the design that, that you guys laid out. And I said, oh, they're just going to change, I think it's just right here on Main D, intersection, and that was it, the rest is all going to be.
Okay.
Anything for it? Nothing. We appreciate it, I know we gave you a lot of life, uh, you know, it's, it's never easy, and it's never fast enough, and of course. But having traveled through the intersections every time we come in from the east, uh, the road is so much smoother, and it's funny because, you know, having traveled that for so many years, there's dips that you expect, and they're not there anymore, so right before we got to the, the light coming from the east, there was a hump, you know, or whatever, I slowed down to it, and I'm like, oh, it's not even, yeah, but anyway. So it's going to be a really nice little endeavor to hopefully, blend into truck traffic with our goals, so.
Yeah, and I've gone with, uh, port of entry in our permit section, and they're, they're waiting, I, I think, if, if the city wants, and I know we've talked about this, an ordinance to stop, no, through truck traffic, we can put the signs up, once we get the signs up, then they can ticket it. And, and fine for that, you know, that's, that's a must, I mean, they're just, they're turning everything up, except those trucks, yes.
So, we kept this in TPF grants for a while by all of the, uh, not the project, not you guys, but we'll have plenty of streets for repair for a while, so.
Right.
But anyway, we do appreciate it, thank you for coming tonight, Crystal, well, they gave a PSA, I mean, sent out a PSA, and I'm like, I know, I'm sure they did, but I rarely see it, and, uh, that means I don't see it, there's a lot of people done, and just having, having, uh, somebody explain where we're at, timeframe, we're not going to hold you to it, we're going to rid of you, but we're not going to.
No, we're holding to the July twentieth.
Exactly.
Any questions, anything, you guys, everyone has my number, I hope, and, or Crystal can contact.
You know, you know, one thing, I think, I think one thing we forget to thank you for is in the beginning, I remember when you approached me and we talked about it, about North and South Main, how you cleaned that up, of course, that was the first thing you did, and we really didn't appreciate that, and we did really did, because it was during COVID, right after COVID, everybody's getting together, trying, but I remember that you come in and you told me they were going to get South Main and, and North Main cleaned up, and then we'll worry, start our project, and that was, that, that made a lot of smiling faces, but we never thanked you, but I just want to, I just want to remember, and, and, uh, tell the public that you guys did that in the beginning, because that was, would be after, after this project went into take place, but you guys did it in the beginning, uh, before you took off the center, the, the big project.
And that, that came from our district engineer, our new, uh, Francisco Sanchez in Roswell. He's the one that appropriated the money and got that ball rolling, and we did, took care of that for you guys, so.
We really appreciate that, and I apologize for not saying that soon, but, and then reminding the folks, you know, because I know we're, we're, right now, but we wouldn't have had the North and South, and if, um, if that was, which would be quite tough.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate it.
John, do I have to hear anything on the railroad tracks?
I was going to let it go. Well, yeah, so I just got to Jennifer Pierce today, and then, um, our resident engineer, Lucy Montana in Roswell, so she's trying to get, to locate the money, see if the funding is there, and as soon as it's located and down, we will, we'll contact the city and get that fixed. It's just a matter of repair or replace, you know, the dollar amount, so I, I hope they're standing toward replacing me and not repairing me, because it, it doesn't seem to, to last. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Anything further, Ms. Vol? All right, uh, I had, I am denied, Monica is, uh, not today, we'll make, I guess, uh, I was going to present her, but it's, uh, just a letter of acknowledgement and, uh, hopefully letting her know that our thanks and gratitude for what she's done with, uh, the Lovington Main Street. So I'm just going to read it, and then I'll probably hand it to her this week. And it says, uh, Ms. Salsito, this letter is to hereby recognize the outstanding contribution to the city of Lovington that you have made over the last seven years as the Director of Lovington Main Street. Through your efforts in leading such programs as Smoking on the Plaza, Downtown Cleanup, the Todd Improvement Plans, Storybook Park, Live Concerts, Fran Ashley, Fran Ashley Plaza, and most importantly, the restoration of the Historic Lee Theater, your positive impact to our city has been truly significant. You have led Main Street with a vision towards new and innovative techniques for improving our historic downtown by always respecting our traditions. You also demonstrated a true ability in securing and executing both public and private grants for the betterment of our community. Ms. Salsito, on behalf of the city of Lovington, please accept our heartfelt thanks and gratitude for a job well done, and we wish you continued success in your future endeavors. So our head, uh, a lot of shoes to fill, big shoes to fill, and, uh, anyway, uh, but we know you can, you can do it. You were, uh, you, you've worked with Monica for a long time, and you, you know what's going on, and so, uh, we're looking forward to you taking on it, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, um, this brings us to our public comment time. If anyone has anything to, uh, address the Commission, just come forward, say your name, oh, she's on her way, okay. I didn't know, I had waited until you were up.
That's okay, I'm supposed to practice introducing myself as the Executive Director of Lovington Main Street, Storm Key. Uh, Monica couldn't be here, her dad has an appointment, so she's taking care of him, but I know she'll appreciate that very much, and I do have some very big pumps I would probably say to fill, so. Um, but I also wanted to get up here during public comment and let y'all know, we have another game night at Cornerstone Creamery this Thursday. We will have a Uno tournament. Two weeks ago, we did the Locaria Night, and it was a huge success, there was over forty people there. All the tables were full, we had a lot of people having a lot of fun, and Cornerstone really appreciated the extra effort. So we hope to fill them again this Thursday, and we love you. Thank you.
So, uh.
Yes, sir.
The only, uh, thing I've been hearing is, can you give us this target date, when that theater's going to be open?
We are targeting May, so like first of summer break. We, uh, right now, last week, we had electrical in there, the HVAC is being installed, we ran into some issues there, which, old building, we're not surprised we ran into issues, um, but HVAC is being installed. I have one more round of a penny drive with the high school scheduled during February, and that should wrap up enough pennies to finish our floor. And the whole point of that project was, like, everyone in the community did a little part in restoring that theater. So when anyone gets to go in there, they'll see the pennies, and they'll see how much it took to help bring that place up. Um, we've had plumbing, we have new sinks that are ready to install. The upstairs is being converted to the Main Street office, and that's just about done, wrapping it up with electrical and heating. So hopefully, 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 end of May, so that we can run for the summer.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
I would like to apologize, it was my full intention to get there Friday night. We finally got back into town late that night, just a lot of things just kept us away, but.
That's okay, we, we did have, uh, a going away dinner from Lana on Friday, and we did have several people come and go, and she really appreciates seeing everybody's faces that she's worked with throughout the years. Um, again, she'll be really thankful for the letter, and thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. All right, non-action items. All right, I had asked this item, discussion of the main water line from the well field to be put on here because a few were still, I'm sure most commissioners know, probably a lot of the city personnel knows, but not everybody understood, I think, the, the potential, uh, but Robert, why don't you come up and we'll, we'll just kind of have a little discussion, uh, you know, the, the city manager gave me a call and he said, basically, we have a lake, we are creating a lake, uh, out off of our main water line. And, uh, at that time, of course, we didn't know exactly what all of it involved. But, uh, it's been an item that's been in my mind since basically sitting here. Uh, if we were to have a major problem on that line, we are not prepared. And we, and I don't even think that most people understand that that's the only water that comes to the town. And, uh, if we had to do a shutdown and a repair, that our next effort is we're gonna be trucking water and that's a lot of water. So why don't you, why don't you tell us what happened? And then, uh, my goal is to have this, to have everyone start coming up with a an emergency plan in the, in the interim. And then let's get into a long range plan. Somehow, we're gonna be able to, uh, work around that if we were to have that.
Okay, the leak that was out there was, uh, mostly humid air. The, uh, we, uh, department failed to go out there and check, walk around the tanks, boosters and stuff as things were going on. Um, the tank, set points on the tank from SCADA were set wrong. First of all, the tanks were overfilling and dumping every twenty minutes. A lot of water. I don't know how much water, but a bunch of water. That was going on for a long time. We don't know how long that was going on. Besides that, we had a chlorine leak in the ground with water that had been going on for a long time also. That's where that lake came from. Cattails were probably six, seven foot tall. You know, everybody kept saying two weeks, that cattails don't grow in two weeks. That's all. It'd been there a long time. So getting that figured out, we got the leaks fixed, we got the set points fixed. We got stuff going in the right direction. We, uh, we thought it was a twenty-four inch line at the beginning because of the way it was flowing. In the meantime, I've ordered, uh, clamps and a joint of pipe, twenty-four inch, stuff that I think we're gonna need in case we had an emergency. Just might not be all of it, but we've got to start somewhere ordering stuff that we've got. So that's ordered, it's here. Uh, I talked to another guy today. We've got some more stuff we need to order. I'll get with them towards the end of the week, see what else he can get for us. Just in case we have a leak, we can go out there and, you know, stop it and, and fix it. You know, it, it'll take a little time, but we're getting there. I know it's, I don't want to say we're getting there because I know it's, it's an emergency thing. It's a big thing. So I think we're, we're probably sixty, seventy percent there from where we were at before, in case something would happen.
And additional steps we've taken, because I've been extremely involved. I've been out there a few times. Uh, come to find out, our backup generator, which is three hundred and fifty kilowatts, had not been serviced in over four years. So we are getting that generator serviced and up and running immediately. We also have our grant writer looking into purchasing a brand new one, uh, through a grant, although I'm told we have ten years left on that generator, but we're still going after, um, possibility of getting a new generator, which I checked, they were about eighty-five thousand dollars. Additionally, uh, we're very unhappy with our contractor who was providing the SCADA. And Robert and I have looked into alternative contractors to maintain that system. We have pumped too much money into that system for it not to, for it to fail us. For instance, one, one of the sources of that lake was one of our booster tanks overflowing every twenty minutes. That's unacceptable. We have alarms for that. I now have the SCADA on my phone, just like the rest of the best. So I monitor it as well. So we're getting there. It's just, um, as you said, that area, that line is critical to the city and we're gonna make sure it's hundred percent reliable or as close to that as possible.
It being a steel line and I realize that, you know, that was what was put in. And there's not a lot of better alternatives, maybe, uh, maybe a poly line now. But, uh, anytime you add chlorine to water, you create a corrosive environment, not just, I don't mean mildly, uh, chlorine attacks, uh, miles, any steel, even stainless steel. So, uh, my concern is we probably need to look at an integrity test in section of that pipe, uh, to start working that, do a preventive maintenance on that. And then, uh, as we, as we really determine the condition of that line, then we can start, uh, a plan that any known, or any area we suspect of failure and put a, uh, some sort of an action plan in it and then hopefully, over the next few years, come up with some sort of a bypass or whatever, because it happened to be in late fall or early, uh, early winter, uh, at our lowest, one of our lowest times of demand had it, you know, but even then, I really don't believe the city can, uh, with all of its storage tanks, combine, I don't think they can last two, two days. I mean, and during the summer, I know we wouldn't last six or eight hours, so.
You're right. It, it, it won't. It just, but you know, we, like you were telling, I've already spoke to a gentleman and he's supposed to do that, start that test sometime next week and, and figure out how, what to do on some of that stuff. I've contacted also, uh, tap masters and see if in an emergency they can come out and do, how big of a line they can come out and do time-wise and what it would take from us on our part. Uh, management authority needs up, everything, got sinking at the wastewater. We're, we're taking, trying to take some steps to correct that, you know, mend that line or whatever we need to do to keep it away from, you know, that part of it anyway. And we've got lots of other issues that we've got to take care of, but that's probably one of the top priorities that we're taking care of. Like Mr. Raddus said, we've got, we're working on SCADA. SCADA is, um, not working the way we're supposed to, but we've got stuff, hopefully tomorrow lined up. Tomorrow, we're supposed to have a meeting with Doug Guy and maybe he can come out and, you know, help us out a little bit better.
Another thing we discovered is out of our nineteen or twenty producing water wells, we've only been using six or eight for all our water, which we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to, to improve these wells. So we've now implemented a system where we're rotating the wells better and saving on our pumps. We have nineteen or twenty wells. We should be using them.
Uh, again, this was, this was a discussion item. It's really a, you know, there is always a potential problem. And so, uh, the more prepared we are, the better we can. Appreciate you coming and talking tonight. Uh, thanks for the information. And, uh, all, as I, I spoke with the city manager earlier today, I, you know, it would be nice, uh, just to have reports every couple, three months. And this is what we're working on. This is what we're seeing and things like that. It's kind of, it keeps everybody, gives them a piece of mind and also keeps and our forethoughts that we really need to be preparing for the future better than we have, uh, the past few years. So we appreciate it very, very much. Thank you for coming and thanks for recording on where we are.
Yes, sir.
Robert, I just wanted to add to that real quick. Other than what we appreciate you do, but, uh, this support supports the no tolerance. Okay, so if you got problems down the field or employees, there's no tolerance. If there's, if there's SCADA system, you need to go with somebody else. City, city manager will go with somebody else. I mean, I'm tired of this.
Me too.
You know, I, I always say if you give a little bit, then you take more the next time. And I think that's been our issue in the past. It just kind of like a dead slide and it's just, it, it, it never goes back to. So I, since day one, the two shoulders, a few years back, when we just pressed the reset button, we just said no tolerance. You know, either you're on board or if you're not, get off the stage. As we're, we're not, we're not accepted, seconded.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate that. We just want to say we support you, so.
Yes, sir.
But we just want that attitude to back up, back here.
And I appreciate it. You have to be like backing us and support forever, Dave. But we're, we're starting making changes and it's gonna get, it's gonna get better.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Ms. Paul?
So the sheet I handed out, this is, uh, on the ADA transition plan. So I've been working on this plan because it's one of the plans we have to update with the state, uh, to receive federal and, uh, NMDOT grants. So, um, this list, uh, the very top part of the list is projects that were in the original two thousand and fifteen ADA transition plan where the city said we're gonna try to increase our accessibility in that plan, said a long time ago. Uh, the bottom three, um, they're West Jackson, Second Street, Ninth Street. Those are newer ADA plans that I've been working on. Um, I just wanted you guys to look at this because I'm in the middle of updating this plan. And if you have any other plans that the city wants to, uh, do, there's some of those on that list that have been done, but there's a lot of them on that list that haven't been done. You know, we have the Washington Street State, they had items, uh, that wanted handicap all in the downtown area to, you know, be built up, uh, for that accessibility for people, uh, with ADA, um, clients. So, uh, just some, any information from you guys, um, that you feel on these projects uh, or that you feel I can add to this, just let me know. Uh, like I said, I'm trying to get this ADA wrapped up so next month, hopefully, we can get it adopted and get it to the state.
Questions, comments?
Appreciate it.
Yeah. I don't know that I, I know enough to really comment on it, so.
That's a lot.
Dude, you're a spare time. I'll go back to that, you're back if you got it, you're glad you're still in. All right, uh, oh, we're, we're in the pick of the night, Commissioner Gandy.
Any money, though?
No pickle for me? No pickle for you. All right.
Do it with, with Commissioner Bolt, he'll be making the motion.
All right, let's bring to our action items, um, the four entertaining motion on our bills.
I'm here, I have a motion of. Second.
All right, there's a motion in the second. Uh, discussion. I just, a few minutes, the.
I just saw that big item, Ron, your own bill was fifty dollars.
I was gonna say, the police out here. Hey, you said to bring up morale and recruiting.
Job well done.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Bolt.
Uh, this one would be going to skip, uh, the Artesia Fire Equipment Bunker Gear and Rescue. I was wondering what that consists of.
So we're trying to spend some of the leftover money from last year's state fire funds. We had a hundred and fifty-eight thousand left. And that's sixty-two thousand is brand new bunker gear for the whole department and rescue equipment for my EMS only for when we have car wrecks. They can protect themselves when they get in cars to make access to the patients. And then some fire help as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, another one I have is, uh, this would be going to our treasurer, Fiero and Fiero. I know the last meeting we were at, we were talking about coming to a, uh, close on this and I understand he helped us with the audit and that. Uh, just wondering, uh, how much more of this are we gonna be having?
Uh, we shouldn't see more bills like these. Um, the first twenty thousand was a reissue of a check that was lost in the mail. So we have this document on the check and, um, voided reissue a new check to him. And so the ninety-seven hundred is pretty much our wrap up on the audit. Um, for that, we will just be using mainly for consulting questions and not work anymore.
Right.
Okay, so that, so, so that Fiero, the first one was a reissue of a check?
Correct. We had to reissue a check that was mailed in early December and he just never received, so. We, we have several, we actually have several reissues of checks on this list. Um, I don't know what happened to that particular batch of mail. It never made it to people.
What was, what were the other?
Uh, we have one for, um, Solder Miller. We have reissued. Um, that one was more of an issue of, we, um, paid out a full contract that they were gonna bill against and they were nice enough to mail us back the check and say, oh, we don't have to pay us the check. We will, we'll pay us this much money, but not yet. So we, uh, voided a check that was over a hundred thousand dollar check and reissued this, um, check for thirty thousand.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, a couple of other ones, uh, for M and W Water Well Service. We have one for, uh, eighty-seven, forty-nine. And I'm just, it says water pump repair. I was wondering where that was.
It, it was one of the, I, I believe it was a pump number nine, well number nine out in the well field, sir.
Okay. So the master plumbers underneath is a totally different, it says APS. Tank water heater, where, where is that for?
Animal shelter.
Okay.
Now, broken and flooded, uh, silly. It was a thirty-year-old water heater that busted and flooded.
Okay. And I have one other one, uh, it's, uh, New Mexico Public Regulations Commission. It says water wastewater violation payments, uh, for two for four hundred and five dollars. What were them in regards to? Because there's no, uh, explanation here.
It was for, uh, the water department had failed to, uh, to report something, I, I believe is what, what it was, and they gave us a citation for that. For the, uh, eight, with the, uh, did it was eight-one-one, was it, uh? Eight-one-one?
Eight-one-one.
Eight-one-one?
Okay, what are we doing? What are we doing, Robert, to keep this from happening again?
I, I am not, uh, as of right now, we're trying to pay attention to this stuff and, uh, and keeping, holding people accountable to what's, what's happening. Uh, a lot of stuff is getting ignored. We're working on trying to get everybody back on where they're supposed to be and taking care of things today instead of tomorrow.
Okay, and I know you've got a lot of things to keep on top of. I understand that. Uh, just stuff like this, violations and that, we don't need them. We need to take care of them. And, uh, as I say, keep up the good work. Uh, you have a lot to do, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I would just note.
Other than that? Other than that, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd just note for the commission, um, waste management is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand. That's actually three monthly payments, right? So that's why it's higher this month than the normal one sixty, one eighty for waste management.
Just in the transition of people, where the bills were going and getting sent for payment. Clear now, now, I'm being told, Christie. So she knows we'll get paid. Norley is, so that was the twenty-two, twenty-three.
So that goes back to the agreement in May two thousand and sixteen, didn't start till two thousand and eighteen towards the building of the Wellness Center. It's a five-year agreement, um, hundred and five thousand a year. This was the last payment.
No, I just, I hadn't seen it in a while, so I just.
Yeah, it's, it's the last one. We are gonna enter, we hope to enter into an agreement with Norley where in exchange for not billing them for water just for the Wellness Center, um, we are not gonna have to contribute anything else towards the Wellness Center in the future. So effectively saving us seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year against what we've been paying them. But that, that is done. You'll never see that payment again.
So let me, let me ask on this, uh, David.
Yes, sir.
So the water bill for the hospital is basically around twenty thousand a year?
Oh, no, it's more than that. Uh, but we're just, in terms of the agreement that we hope to have with them is just the Wellness Center. So the hospital has seven meters. There's a yard line. There's the hospital. There's the clinic.
seven meters, there's a yard line, there's the hospital, there's the clinic, then there's one for the wellness center, which we estimate if billed correctly would be about uh, twenty thousand a year. Um, we've been paying the hospital a hundred and five thousand a year, so we'd still bill for the rest of the hospital's water usage, just not the wellness center, but that's something I would bring before the commission to vote on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Robert, the last item, I mean, the last line was a emergency sewer line repair would be a, um, a pretty substantial sewer line repair, but you know that was.
Fifty-three.
It's a life.
That's the, that's the sewer. Sixty-one thousand, yes, and I, I'd also.
Well, emergency was the only reason.
Right.
Right.
Go ahead. Um, all the fixtures, toilets and sinks, um, repainting, tiling, urge the commissioners to go into the library and take a deep breath.
You can now.
Yes, but, and we also fixed the heat, because they didn't have heat. Uh, which I was not aware of, but.
Can't let him know.
They weren't burning books?
Anything further, commissioners? Hearing nothing. Uh, Shannon?
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
All right, with that, that item will be adjourned or forgotten. We are.